Welcome, everybody, to the October 28th special meeting pertaining to storm water issues in Lower Southampton. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I'd like to introduce the Board of Supervisors, department heads, to the public. I see a lot of familiar faces out there, but there's some that I haven't seen. To my right is Supervisor Cindy Bowman. We have our Solicitor Brendan Callahan filling in for Mr. Dillon tonight. To my left, I have Mr. Steve Castle. To his left, we have Mr. Paritano. Up front, the two guys with the good-looking haircuts. We have Mr. John Everett, who's our Township Engineer. Mike Italia is our Zoning Officer. Behind them is Mr. Joe Galdo, Township Manager and Public Works Director, Mr. Rich Coppins. I know we have a lot of people here tonight for the special meeting to air their issues with storm water problems in Lower South. I'm going to try to keep this meeting to an hour, hour and a half. If there's questions that you hear residents have already came up to express concern about, and it's the same question you have, if we're running out of time, please allow somebody else to maybe come up who hasn't had a question raised yet. We're going to do everything we can, folks. This will be one of however many meetings we need to try to resolve these issues. We can't promise you anything tonight. I'd be lying to you if I did. But other than, you know, hearing what you have to say, I know Mrs. Longacre wanted to do a presentation. We're going to let her do that, too. We're going to let everybody hopefully, you know, have ample time to tell us what you're seeing down there. And at this time, I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Everett. I know Mr. Everett kind of wanted to give like a general overview of what he's seen, what he knows, and, you know, maybe some recommendations. And then we will open the floor to public comment. We'll have everybody come up, one at a time. We'll give, you know, generally what we do is a three-minute time limit. I'm not holding anybody to a three-minute time limit tonight. But, you know, if you don't mind, tell us what the issues are, and then we'll try to let everybody get up and talk. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Mike, can you bring up the USGS map? So, I have a map on the, it's going to be on the TV screen. It shows, now back up, it should be. So, I looked at the drainage shed to the Brookside Culvert, just downstream of the cemetery and everything upstream of that. Yeah, it's going to be a big blue line. The drainage area is approximately 410 acres. The cemetery takes up about 100 of that, and then you have the Pike Road Industrial Park. Across Turnpike, you have another cemetery and residential areas. So, we have a mix of uses. You have the cemetery, you have residential, industrial, some commercial areas. There is one existing detention basin that is supposed to handle stormwater runoff from Pike Road Industrial Park. There's one rain guard in that area as well, and there is some stormwater management along the Turnpike. As part of the cemetery grading permit that was recently approved by the township, three additional stormwater management basins were installed where there was no detention previously. So, I know there were some concerns with regard to the amount of trees that were removed. There was variances granted by the Township Zoning Hearing Board to allow that disturbance to install the basins. We were made aware of a report prepared. All right, there it is. So, that blue line is essentially the drainage area. So, any rain drop that falls within that blue line ultimately ends up at the culvert at Brookside. Like I said, it's approximately 410 acres. 100 of those acres are the cemetery, Stone Moore. To the northwest is the Pike Road Industrial Park. To the north of the Turnpike is some residential neighborhoods and then additional, the White Chapel Memorial Park. So, as I was saying, there's three new bases that were installed for the cemetery to control stormwater. Previously, there was none that were out there. As part of that project, existing stone paths were paved, and then some drainage improvements were installed. As was noted at the Board of Supervisors meeting, there was multiple numerous trees that were removed as part of that. There was a fee in lieu of that was provided to the township. Back in 2022, I went out there during a rain event. A lot of the stormwater is coming from the Turnpike. So, approximately a mile of the Turnpike, it's a little less than a mile, that big red line that goes right through that drainage area, approximately 100 feet wide. So, it comes out to approximately, I had a number here, but it's like 36,000 cubic feet for every inch of runoff, for every inch of rain event. So, cubic feet, so that's pretty significant. The issue is when we get these storms that are happening more frequently, we get a lot of rain real quick, and the stormwater doesn't have a chance to infiltrate, and it runs into the adjacent swales, the adjacent creek, and it, you know, inundates everything downstream. So, I know lots of people are going to have questions.
There's a premium base.
No, they're actually, that's actually wetland areas. Those little things that are, they look like grass. As part of the land development, wetlands were determined. You can't disturb wetlands, so the project was kept out of that. So, there was a report done in 2012 by, it was, it was for the Philadelphia Water Department. It was for the requesting 167 Stormwater Management Act. It was enacted by Bucks County NDEP. Ben Salem and Lower Southampton never enacted it. My guess is that the stormwater management for Lower Southampton is actually more restrictive than what was included in the requesting Act 167 plan. So, one of the main requirements is that the 100-year storm and the post-development, after it's developed, all the impervious areas are installed, has to be what the 10-year storm is in the pre-development. So, that's, you know, a significant reduction in runoff that's required to be done by stormwater management facilities, and that's to try to help reduce downstream flooding. So, that's my little spiel, if anybody. I know there's going to be lots of questions. I will try to answer them as best I can. This has been going on for a while. I looked today, tried to look through the meeting minutes. They go back to 2010 on the website, and I think the first mention was in April of that year. So, it's been brought up multiple times. I did find a project that was done in 2012 with regard to upsizing the culverts downstream. I think there was project included three culverts. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other improvements that have done in the drainage area, other than the three basins by Stone Moore.
All right. Yeah.
Can we make comments on what he knows about the area, Mr. Bowman?
Sure. Mr. Coppins or Mr. Italia, if there's anything else you'd also like to add?
Give us a little history of the area, Rich, and what we generally do to try and keep things flowing and so forth, and then lighten the atmosphere?
From a public works standpoint, we will send out our backhoe down to Pine Hill Road. That culvert was replaced at one point because there used to be dual pipes, small dual pipes there. And we like to dig out the sediment that's in front of that culvert from time to time, depending on the storms and how much sediment comes down there. As far as the other culverts digging out in front of, we was down there, we cleaned out in front of all the culverts last week, but we can't dig in front of all the culverts because of the granite. There's so much rock in that development, we just, our bucket can't penetrate the bottom of that creek. We can get whatever residual debris is there, you know, out, but there's only like two places that we can really dig down and help, you know, alleviate that debris from and the sediment from clogging those pipes up. So, that's one thing that we do do. So, you know, we try to maintain those culverts. We try to make sure they're clear. We moved the tree last week in the wooded area in front of the culvert. You know, that was across the embankment, so we try to keep trees cleared, you know, that are near the culvert. So, but that's what we basically maintain, is anything that goes on in that road, we want to make sure that is cleared. So.
So, the significant events that you had specifically, I believe the last major one was in June. Correct me if I'm wrong.
July 31st.
Okay, July.
There was one early July, or July.
But the first one was in June, I believe, correct? Or is that what, it was the winter?
July 7th, and then the end of the month.
Right. So, the first one, you had about three and a half inches of rain in about 40 minutes. That's a lot of water for anything to handle. So, you know, I know we're getting these frequent rainstorms. You know, we have about an inch and a half to two inches coming in the next two days. We'll be down there Thursday. Looks like the heaviest part's going to be daybreak in the morning. We will be down there probably late morning, midday to catch it. I encourage anybody, if they see significant flooding or like something abnormal, please take some pictures and send them in to us, because that will help if you can see, especially if it's, oh, that's not normally like that, you know. But if it's handling it well, you know, we'll obviously go up, check the cemetery and be present there. But those events, as someone who's been dealing with emergency response for 30 years, those are very hard to manage anywhere. You know, we manage in Hape Row, and Penny Pack Creek there floods instantly, wipes out the apartments, and we got people bailing and swimming within minutes. So, anywhere you have that, especially with the Turnpike kind of going there unmitigated, meaning not managed, it's going to impact anything around it. We estimated that when the Turnpike was expanded early 2000s, like you guys live there, you might have a better timeline than I do, they didn't put any basins in at all. We are, we, my firm represents some communities up the northeast extension. If you've gone to the Poconos recently, and you're seeing they're widening the Turnpike there from Lansdale North, there's basins everywhere, because that's just, it's not going to work. So, what you see here versus what you see there is not apples to apples. So, a lot of technology has come forward, and they're being more proactive. Getting the Turnpike to respond to here is a larger conversation, I think, that we're going to have with some of the elected officials as well, to try to get all the parties to the table to get a longer-term fix.
And just so you guys all know, too, we did invite the Turnpike tonight. Soon as we had this date set, we reached out to them, Mr. Everett's reached out to them. Mr. Everett, did they ever respond back to you? No? Okay. Anything else, Mike, or Mr. Coppins?
Good.
I just want to make a correction. I think I said Pine Hill, I meant Hilltop. It's the last culvert at the end of the neighborhood before it exits Long Caroline Road. So, that was the culvert that was replaced years ago, and one of the ones we maintain.
All right, thank you. I know Mr. Castle had asked me to give him a minute. He wanted to bring something up.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I worked in the police department for 25 years. I have been around with this flooding. I've patrolled every square inch of these areas. Mr. Kutsaradis and I went down yesterday and walked through the bushes and climbed in pipes, and the Somerton Forge, which is upriver from you guys, has two large retention ponds, retention basins in there. They did that correctly. We walked through the cemetery, White Chapel. We didn't, that's all grass. We didn't see any runoff. There is a retention pond, a large one, across the Turnpike from you on Pike or Pennsylvania Avenue. There's a large one there. There, at the rear of Somerton Forge, there are three pipes that go under the Turnpike, and they come out to Pine Hill, but we didn't have access to people's backyards, you know. You just can't walk through the yards. We wanted to see what type of flow comes through there, but we could not see any, you know, there might be a, you know, marsh back there, so that might be some natural collection area for whatever's coming under the Turnpike. On Brookside, there's a large culvert that goes under the road. We spoke to one of the gentlemen that lives in the house there. When there was major flooding in July, July 31st, he took video. What had occurred there, there was a large portion of debris that came down through the wooded area, which caused a clogging action, which caused all that area to flood. One of the homeowners that owned one of the properties there, at her expense, she brought a machine down and took all the logs that came out. So, there was also at the, at the corner of Brookside, right at the bend where the culvert goes under there, there's, that lady owns two houses there. Okay? At her expense, she brought a machine in and removed the debris that was clogging that pipe up.
We live right there. There was nothing like that that occurred. We stood there watching the flooding as it happened. There was no debris. Everything was free-flowing through that culvert there.
Okay.
I'll show you, I'll show you live video from it.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw live video.
We have videos in there for everyone to see as well. There's a lot of pictures, just so everyone can get a grasp of what we're looking at, especially for people in other areas that are seeing something similar when they're downstream, if ours is not as severe, if it's more severe, just so everyone can kind of gauge.
For one second, I don't, I'm not trying to stop you from speaking, but we're going to want it on microphone. So, if you have something substantial to add, let's wait till you get up to the microphone, okay?
Also, the Homeowners Association owns that patch of woods there. Last year, when I go by, I still check this out, it's part of one of my duties, I live in this town. There's trees that'll fall down in that wooded area, which then start to collect debris. So, there's a certain amount of maintenance that has to be done. If a tree falls across the creek there, somebody's got to cut it up and get it out of the way so the storm flows. We have always had issues down at Platt's property on Hilltop. His tennis courts would all flood out. Now, that land is a little bit lower there, and, but I've never seen the road there on Hilltop flood over there. You couldn't drive, but once it comes under that pipe. But this stream meanders through the neighborhood. So, I walked all this area. Again, I walked up to Stone Moore, and we walked through the area behind there. So, I'm intimately aware of the creek bed and all that, what's going on. So, I'm not the expert, that's what we're here tonight.
Any of my colleagues up here like to add anything before I open it up to the floor?
All right.
All right. One by one, please come up, folks.
Are you going to let her do her presentation?
Oh, we can have Leslie come up first.
Do that left presentation one?
Yeah.
That'll look senseless. I think, that's fine. Identify yourselves.
Leslie Longacre, 110 Brookside Drive.
Hazel Hooper, 110 Brookside Drive. And just to let all you guys know, all these pictures, we have dates. I want you, if anyone wants a copy of it, I can send you a copy of the PowerPoint as well.
And these are photos from most of us who live right on Brookside. So, it's kind of a little bit of everybody's photos.
All right. So, first one, obviously, we have a man attempted to.
Folks, yeah.
Because there's people at home there watching this.
The mic's on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's better if you hold it.
So, hello? Is it on? You guys can hear it? So, this first picture is obviously one of our residents attempted to go through the flooding, thinking he could get home. He had an electric vehicle. He was not able. I believe the fire department had to come. I don't know if he got towed out. I believe it sat there for a few days. You're good to go to the next slide. This is just kind of some map overview, so you'll see it starts right at that top blue point. To the left is Sunset Memorial, Stone Moore. That's the cemetery. I have a little notification of where all the trees were removed, and then that red point at the bottom is part of the end of Brookside, where our little section has really collected and watched the flooding, because we can't really get to other parts of the neighborhood when it does happen. So, we've had multiple feats of flooding. We've had car damage. We've had water get into our garage personally. I know the Fosters have also had issues with their sheds. Our neighbors have also had more issues. We get trash deposited when all this flooding does occur, so we've had tons of trash, just huge wooden beams, and up in our front yard that we have to clean up. Go to the next one. So, what happened at Sunset Memorial, obviously, we do not know that this is the cause, but we have noticed just, correlation is not causation, but once they started this clearcutting of these trees, and they started to implement more stone graves and widen this area, we saw an intense increase in this flooding just in the past two years when this occurred. So, they clearcut over 618 trees. There was a fee put into place in lieu of replacing all of those trees. When looking back in the notes, it was around $50,000, and it was noted by Ms. Trioli that a market value for a tree is $300, said by Mr. Everett's, and $50,000 is a little low compared to the expected $185,000 to replace all of those trees, which would go towards putting in implementation to lower this flooding and help our basins get better so that we don't have the effect. So, this is not only just what should be done, but this is part of our township code. So, they have to do this, whether it's replanting, paying a fee, and it's all necessary. The reason that they did that fee and everything was because Sunset Memorial had a cease and desist by our Bucks County Conservation Society. They said, you're doing a large amount of land disturbance, you don't have the permits approved, and you need to stop. And that is when they came forward, got our permits approved, talked to our township, talked to our supervisors, and then committed to this money fee lieu instead of replanting all the trees that would intentionally be planted instead of a fee. So, you can go to the next one. So, you can just kind of see the area here is what's clearcut. On the right is just an outline of what it used to look like. On the left is what it looked like roughly a year ago. I believe it might have been late fall or like late summer. This was in the spring. Yeah. So, you can see there's a pretty large difference. I know it doesn't necessarily seem like a whole lot, but when you think about how many trees, over 600, just in that little area, were removed, it causes a lot of effect on our soil and our infiltration rate on our soils. So, you can go to the next one. It's just going to be another set of pictures. These are some more ones. One's from a Google satellite image, and one's the current Apple Maps satellite image. This is more when they were doing the removal, and it looks obviously a lot worse, but those mumps of having no trees and just that raw soil can cause really intense compaction, and it can increase our surface runoff, which is, we're having an issue with, obviously. So, you can continue. These are some pictures of the retention basins at Sunset Memorial, Stone Moore. We went down kind of a few days after the flooding, and you can see that there's a lot of erosion. All that sediment is settling into the basins. Some of them are already clogged. It takes basins a while to become established, to work effectively. It's not, we put it in, and it's going to work immediately. It's going to take years, but that's going to need upkeep. And really, what we need to focus on is that they're going to upkeep, and they're going to implement more stormwater management potentials. So, it doesn't just become this big mudslide, and our marshes can't grow in, and they can't absorb more, and they don't actually work with the plants in that area to help us. You can go to the next slide. These are just some more overall pictures of the retention basins. You can keep going if you would like. Me and my mom, yesterday, went through Sunset Memorial into the woods and went, I guess it's northwards, along the Turnpike into the Industrial Park. So, we followed the carved-out stream, so you can see where it would naturally have been and where it has been over the centuries. The top-left corner is right behind those retention basins, so it's a large, it's that marsh wetland area that was determined to wetland in 2012 when they did the Act 167 surveys. Then we followed that all the way up, and you can see it's really dried out, but it's a wide, it's very deep, it's as, what, as tall as five foot four, as tall as she is.
And you can see this above my head. So. It's very dry.
Oh, that's you in the picture.
Yeah.
That's Leslie down the bottom.
So. Okay. So, it's really dry. Now, you can see where the wetlands were, but once you get up going towards the Industrial Park, that, the runoff that must come there from that Industrial Park, when it is, it must be crazy to have carved such a deep cut, and that wasn't even at the deepest sections, and really wide. And this is one of those big water, you know, that have a grate around them. They're tall. Like, there's so much stuff in there, and that runs down into the Turnpike area where they have, where there is a concrete swell that then runs down into the wetlands, but all of that is coming at such force that then is ripping through our neighborhood. So, whether it's hitting us at Brookside, or someone at Hilltop, or coming through into Somerton Springs, you know, if there's something that can start to slow that down before it hits us, because I know the, that Sunstone were put in the three retention basins, and they probably are going to help, but since they removed all of those trees, whatever they're doing doesn't seem, from my perspective, doesn't seem to be balancing anything out. You know, it's definitely gotten worse.
Go on. So, this graph is actually pulled from Act 167, which was done by NMT Engineering for the Philadelphia Water Company, so, or Water Department. So, the Philadelphia Water Department was having issues within their county, because obviously, we're right on the edge. So, they came here, they looked at what's causing it upstream that's going to affect them. I don't know, I couldn't find anything realistically in paperwork and writing, you know, I didn't dig super, super deep if they worked with the township at all to implement any other aspects to help, or if they just kind of did their survey, did their studies, wrapped it all up, and called it a day. But some of the things that I thought were pretty important, especially for the issues that we're having right now, is the soil group, especially in the Sunset Memorial Stone Moore area. I'm sorry for all of you that's maybe not directly in pine tree farms, because I didn't focus on all the other soil groups and such, but it's a low infiltration rate, so when we do have heavy rains, it's not going to absorb real quick, it's going to have a high runoff rate. For our science heads, we have the soil type here, sure, none of you guys really care about that. But within Act 167, which I do recommend to anyone who's interested in focusing a little bit more on that, read that act, go through it. There's a lot of important graphs in there. There's about flood insurance, there is all about denoted flood problems from previous years. There's a lot of different things. So, one of the other charts was, in 2010, they looked at all the different insurance claims, and there were eight different flood insurance claims in pine tree farms alone. Some were $0 to $5,000, and there were multiple that were $25,000 to $50,000 in a claim. So, it's a consistent problem. Maybe those claims are not directly from these floodings, but they definitely have an issue, especially when you're looking at where those claims are. They're right along the creek lines. There's three on Hilltop, and there was two right near our house between Brookside and Winding. So, you can go to the next one. Now, here are some pictures of current floodings. A lot of these were taken in early, late July, and then I think there might be one or two from a previous year. This is the Foster's house, they're at 132 Brookside, so they're right at that culvert where the creek is coming through into pine tree farms. So, I have a little bit of both pictures during flooding, what her driveway looked like this morning, what her driveway looked like this morning, what it looks like during flooding. This is the exact same spot that that guy had his car stuck and wasn't able to leave. So, it's bad enough that it's going up her driveway, people can't drive through, and this is, I want to see the most intense part when it comes to level-wise, but the strength of it is not as bad here as it is downstream, because once it hits Hilltop, it's catching on that velocity. It's going downstream farther, it's moving at a faster pace, and it's collecting and collecting, so it's a stronger current. So, you can go to the next slide. Oh, the next few are just pictures and some videos. So, this is Brookside and Winding. Winding's coming here, this is Brookside Drive. Winding's coming here, this is Brookside Drive.
Brookside and Williams.
Williams, sorry. And so this is all flowing down into one of the smaller creeks. So our whole driveway, this is our garage, so you can see it's going up. It came into our garage through that seep and came into the back.
That, this, just shows the velocity?
Yes.
That stream is, is this deep normally?
Yeah.
I mean, that is coming down a street, down Brookside Drive. There was kids out there with skim boards. Like, someone could get swept into that.
I, I had to move my brother's car so it wouldn't get flooded and I had to literally go against the current and up our neighbor's, like, super steep driveway because I knew I couldn't make it with the current to get onto Williams Lane because I would have lost control. I wouldn't have been able to drive.
This one is in the, this is along the crack.
And then, these are our backyards. So it's pretty bad. This is the initial culvert for anyone who maybe hasn't seen that area. This is right by the Foster's house where that deep pit is coming from. So this culvert is only four foot by three foot and six inches here. So, you know, pretty small, seems like a normal sized culvert. But in 2001, they enlarged a lot of the culverts in our area to be 10 foot wide. So this is our initial culvert and it's half the size compared to all our other ones downstream. So when you have that back up there, all it's going to do is force it down at a farther rate. If it was wider and it slowly got smaller, it would be a little bit more controlled. It's unfortunate that in 2001, they decided that they didn't want to expand this culvert. Not sure why, maybe the flooding wasn't as bad then, but we're seeing it's having an effect now because it can't handle the flow that we're having, especially because of the size that it is compared to the others.
And that's the one at Brookside?
Yes. This is the one that was said to have logs and such in it that the homeowner removed. But when we're there, it's, it's, it doesn't matter if it was clogged or not, it's coming through just because of the way that the water, the water level rises and especially doesn't help with this area that these creeks here are spring fed. So it's not constantly, we're in a mountain area and it's constantly flowing down, we're always going to have a little bit of a stream coming through. So when we do have this high water, all it does is raise the water table to help that spring fed come in quicker from our aquifers. So in Act 167, they did classify our area as bank erosion as high. This is in the woods. I know you guys said you walked through it, it's that little wooded section in the middle. It's always been pretty eroded, I mean, ever since I was a kid. I'm 24, so it's always been like that. Probably when we looked at it, when some of our first residents came in, almost 100 years ago or so, it wasn't nearly this bad. And erosion happens over time and we try to keep up with our woods. We do bi-yearly, tri-yearly woods cleanups.
And when you say about the removal of trees, we are, our association is all voluntary. So.
We, yeah.
Forty dollars a year and we get maybe 150 homes that actually pay, a lot of people pay more. That pays the taxes, that pays the insurance, and that pays thousands of dollars a year that we spend on tree maintenance for the woods. I think Donna could probably tell you, she's our president, but, I mean, they're cutting it down, everybody's volunteering. We keep, so if there's a tree that's like in that creek, it is not affecting the flooding. Trust me, that water is coming through there and it's not stopping on any.
Now, I will say, it will affect it when the flooding gets bad enough that that tree can potentially travel downstream and that's where we'll have more issues. But our clogging per se in the woods is not the initial start of this flooding. That's, it's going to cause problems downstream, obviously, but you know, you can't put a Band-Aid on the little cut and not stop the bleeding. It's, it's going to keep happening. Continue. This is just another figure from one, Act 167. This is pine tree farms. These are all the culverts that were denoted as undersized in 2012. So this is after they were enlarged and this is 12 years ago when flooding wasn't nearly as bad. So you can always see that, just in the area. And this is just some quotes from the supervisor meeting in 2022, kind of about the Stonemore money, the fees, the, the permits and all that stuff, when they were proposing the basins. I just did some quick snippets if you guys wanted to read it because this is the last slide. And then just an issue overview, we're having this flooding. It's obviously been an issue for years and years and years. It's getting really bad right now. So there's some things that hopefully we can do to fix or mitigate this issue.
Thank you. Very thorough job. Thank you very much.
That was one of the most excellent presentations I've ever seen.
I tried. I tried so much. Everyone could just like, you know, maybe get a better graph so it's not.
I'm, I'm serious. What do you do for a living?
I'm unemployed.
Well, you, you should, you, you should. You should seek a job in communications, you really should.
I'm an environmental science major. I'm an environmental.
All righty, folks. Anybody else, please come up. Please talk into the microphone so the people at home can hear whatever you have to say if there's anything else. I believe the young lady probably covered a lot of it, but there's, you know, there still might be somebody else out there.
Anybody?
How you doing, sir? Thank you for coming today.
Yeah, I'm Sean Stites. I'm on 118 Brookside Drive. I'm right next to Leslie. I've been there about, I think, 11, 12 years now. The flooding's progressively gotten worse. I spent thousands of dollars having to put in French drains in my basement. I have multiple sub pumps. This last storm, I had to stack sub pumps on top of sub pumps to keep up with the water. I bought sandbags. I'm going to be putting sandbags up on Thursday. Yeah, it's kind of ridiculous because I don't know how many people have basements on Brookside. So, yeah, not many. So I feel like I'm at the lowest point in the neighborhood and I have a basement. So I feel like all the waters. Really what happens is the street and the creek are coming together and my house is in the way. So it's been a real issue.
I'm sure it's no fun.
Yep.
Could you make any type of correlation between historically? I know we're getting more rain events or we're getting, or the rain events we're getting seem to be larger than they used to be. And I'm not trying to dissuade from the fact that something needs to be done there, but has the rain events themselves, you think, are bringing the, the problem more to the surface? Or do you just think it's just, everything around it is just causing it to, to do that? I mean, I, I lived in the area 25 years. I don't live in there, but I know people in there, I've been in there, you know, so I'm aware that, you know, it's an area that floods. I mean, just geographically, it's, you know, it's going to happen, but we're going to have to make appeals to the Turnpike Commission as well as some other state agencies. And I know this question's going to come up. You know, that's why I'm trying to ask the residents there if they, they think there's any correlation.
Yeah, I'd say so. I mean, in the past few years, something's dramatically changed. You know, just since I've lived there, I think if we go back to the presentation, you can see things have changed and, you know, the storms are getting worse and the flooding's getting a lot worse. I mean, I've never seen it like that. I wish I could have added my videos to that. You know, it's just, because I'm right next, I'm right next to it. I know it's the same, it's the same flood, but still, it's just, you know, we all know what to do at this point. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
So I'll, I'll give a little bit of additional information. So on the July 1st storm, we had 1.94 inches of rain. There was another storm on the 8th and that was 1.79. And then the end of July, there was another, July 31st, it was 1.21 inches. So they're all roughly the same amount of water and it seems the same amount of effects. So July was pretty, there was some pretty significant storms in July of 2025.
So we were able to pull the rainfall amount per hour. So all has to do with that duration, where you get those quick hitters where that one, that cell was not moving. Like, it, that's why I gave like that three inches an hour rate, whereas some of those are quantified over a 24 hour period. There may only be a section of 20 minutes to an hour where that entire sky comes out and it rings and that's it. So that happened, if you remember, the summer before when it kind of, it was like, I called it the Brownsville Road Dome. Remember, it just sat over Ben Salem and just kept dumping and dumping and dumping and they were pulling people out off a street road and everything. Like, that's, that's what you're seeing. So that, that front.
Oh, it's more to rate per hour than.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Everything gets overwhelmed so quickly that everything floods.
So if you're getting three inches at a pop within an hour or less than an hour, I, I'm not an expertise in this, but the correlation would be more like a 75 year or storm coming through.
Right. Yep.
Mr. Everett, do you think, you know, maybe trying to dredge out these creeks to give them a little more depth? I mean, is that something that might help?
That, that's, that'll be a permitting nightmare. And then once it's, once the storm happens, once the next storm goes, it's going to be full again. I, I think, I think there needs to be an additional investigation on upstream of, I, I think, I think coordination with the turnpike. I, I've been out there multiple times, me and Mike went out there. Behind, unlike you guys, I actually walk behind houses. So where those corners are at where Mike's, where Mike is, so the, the culverts crossing those roads, they're like 12 inch, 15 inch, 18 inch. If you walk back to the right away fence for the turnpike, I mean, you could just look through the fence and there, there's 36 inch pipes, you know, there, so just, you know, common sense, a 36 inch pipe running into a 12 inch pipe, you know, your hydraulics isn't going to work, right? So even though some of that water's going to be conveyed underneath the road, it's going to be backed up and it backs up out of the stream bank and it's going to go to the path of least resistance.
Where is the turnpike actually dumping their water?
It's all throughout there. There's all, there's cross pipes, yeah, there, there, there's multiple pipes there.
There's the big one.
And there, there's a big box culvert that takes, takes flow from there as well.
We'll get you, hold, one second.
I was just going to say, distance wise.
People at home can't hear you.
Um, distance wise, when we walked up, it was probably not even every quarter mile. There was a small plastic drain tube coming out from underneath the turnpike. So it's pretty frequent. It's not like it's.
Multiples.
Oh, yeah.
Flanking the area.
Yeah, it's, um, underneath, there's, we probably saw about seven, eight. And then it falls into that concrete swale and it goes all the way down.
And that concrete swale's large.
Yeah, it is, it is very wide, probably double this table, but it's deep.
And I agree, I agree with, with them that coming out of Pike Road, if you, you go up there, the, the drainage channel that comes out of that area is, I mean, you can see it from the area there. And when it comes out of that basin and the adjacent areas, the stream is, it's a sheer cut. You know, it's, in some spots, it's probably eight feet deep. There's juice falling.
It's taking a highway right now.
Well, it's coming from the Pike Road and then it's, it's getting combined with all the water runoff from.
With the turnpike.
From the turnpike.
Is the, there's a basin in the.
There is, there's a basin and I'm pretty sure it's owned by the township and it, it needs some maintenance.
We, we went back, we went up there, I was probably like 2021, you and I walked back in there and we were like, this hasn't been touched, man. So that's something we should probably definitely invest.
So, so in this Act 167 plan, there's, you know, some costs associated with this. So, you know, in 2012, that is, they anticipated $60,000 to retrofit that existing basin. And then they made a suggestion to put in a, a regional detention basin adjacent to this one.
Are you going to fit that?
Well, it'll be, it'll be in areas that, you know, unfortunately, a lot more trees will have to be removed in that area. And they anticipated, again, in 2012, is, you know, $500,000.
Right. That's $2 million for that.
On the, the one slide on the Act 67 on the Google.
On the mic.
On the slide on the Google doc for the Act 67, it shows where they suggested the, the new basin.
Yeah, it's almost right next to the, the existing.
It does show where, where they wanted to put it in, so like, we can mail you guys that.
Actually, I got it. It was, it's on the Bucks County Planning Commission website. We actually have a resident here that was part of that study. Mr. Kates, right?
Want to take an opportunity there?
Were you involved in the study?
What?
Were you involved in a 2012 study?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to, you got something to say?
My recollection, and I'm not sure it's correct, when that plan is the retention basin that we're talking about was in the industrial park off Buck Road. If you look at that, all that impervious surface with the buildings and the, and the block top and all that stuff there, the only drainage they have in that area is, I forget the term, you probably know, it's just, it's just a swale that runs in the concrete. That's the only, they don't retain it at all, it's just to collect the water so it doesn't corrode the soil and so forth. They were, I, I think you got to attack this thing in a couple of different places. Just, just doing one thing is not going to work. If you, if you did something in the industrial park to retain a lot of the water there, the, the, the culvert going under the turnpike on the Pike Road retention, it's a field, really, it's not a retention basin, it doesn't hold. You might think about putting more retention there, but that culvert is six feet wide by, I mean, 12, 10 or 12 feet wide by six feet high. So you know the amount of water that comes under there. That area drains 70 acres, the cemetery and that industrial park. And, you know, you guys recently changed the impervious surface for industrial areas, but there was none before. You look at the, where the Kmart used to be and, you know, it's all, it's all impervious surface. So it's all going, it's, it's going to accumulate. So you got to, you can't do anything about that now, I understand that. And, you know, things have developed and things, and there's been more building and more impervious surface, but you got to do it, I think you have to do something there. And I, I don't remember where the retention basins were at Somerton Ford, but my recollection there is, is just, it's just a field. And then it, it just runs all down and then hits the culvert and runs underneath.
Somerton Ford is basically a collector.
What's that?
It's a collector. It's not, does not appear designed to hold.
Right.
Based off of. So it doesn't stop the water, it just goes.
And there's concrete low flow channels that just push the water.
Right, right. And in terms of the trees, you know, guys, I've been pushing about trees. In your land development, I don't know what order to apply to the cemetery, but in your land develop, any tree over three inches, you measure the tree, if it's 12 inches, they got to replace 12 inches of tree. So 187 trees, if they were substantial size, you're talking about a ton of money. Now, my recollection, when they first talked about the cemetery thing, was that $50,000 was going to be given to the, to the, I don't know if they ever did it, given to the board to do something about, about drainage. And they were going to use it, I thought.
Put into the beautification fund.
What's that?
Beautification fund. It goes in.
Beautification fund.
Well, the, the discussion at the time, I thought, were related to helping with the storm water issue, but.
The new fees all go into beautification.
So.
So it's, it's.
Money there?
Absolutely.
So we have the money.
But you can only use, when it goes into that fund, like, there's certain parameters. It's not meant for storm water. You had bomb money for storm water.
But it, but it was intended to replace some of the trees.
It is not, not necessarily trees.
So if you actually look into the code, it's not only for beautification, but it's also for health and safety of residents? And considering this flooding is an issue?
Beautification fund.
But when you look at the code, the money, the fee, the fee in lieu of replanting.
I'm just saying, with, with, the monies that were designate, designated over, whatever the beautification fund was created, prior to me, from whatever, 1980s or whatever.
According to our township code, if they give you a fee in lieu of replanting, it does not only have to go to beautification, it is allowed to go into other aspects that help the health and safety of our residents.
Can we find that?
Well, I'm saying, you have storm water money, the storm water money that you currently have for the township is in bomb dollars. So you have money, it's whether the board has to choose and select what projects you want to take or undertake. So that's not the question.
I think she's just, just trying to state that her research is showing one thing and, and we're doing another.
Just to put it in layman's terms, what he's saying is effectively the beautification is very specific on the uses.
Okay.
If, when the check is written, it needs to be allocated elsewhere, it would be, need to be designated at that time.
Oh, at that time, the time that it's. Oh, at that time, the time that it's, the time that's received.
What I'm saying is, the fees in lieu of, here historically, have gone into the beautification fund, that's what I'm saying.
Is that.
Depending on the parameters of the fund, yes, it's absolutely something we can look into. Depending on the parameters of the fund would be now what those, with the money contained there and could be used for.
Yeah.
The fact that they've gone in there is potentially the issue, and I think that's what Mr. Gallagher is trying to.
And remember what I found before about tree cover in this township, since I moved here, I was tracking it for a while. The Delaware County Regional Planning Commission publishes data about tree cover and so forth. Tree cover in this township has been reduced by about twenty percent in the last twenty years and, um, I'm sorry. Oh, and it's it's raises the average temperature in our township compared to a larger part of Bucks County by about ten degrees. So it's going to get worse, we need to plant more trees, besides the ones we should be replacing, we need to plant more trees, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. How are you, sir? Welcome to the supervisor's meeting.
Thank you.
Just to state your name and your address, please.
Yes, I'm Patrick Gallagher, I live at one oh three Williams Lane. Um, I'm at the corner of Brookside and Williams Lane. And I kind of want to touch on the safety aspect that we're now running into because of this increased flooding. In my opinion, the flooding has increased majorly since the project at the cemetery. It's almost as if it's kind of just washing down the cemetery and coming right down Brookside and destroying everything in its path. And because of the force of the water and the amount that's coming, we're experiencing a lot of erosion. The residents are, some getting water in their house, so not only are we having personal property damage, but there's damage to the township's property as well. There's a culvert right on the corner of my property, actually, I was instructed from the township, it's not my property, it is township property, that it, all the dirt has completely eroded from around the pipe. Uh, it was told to me that there was no money in the budget to repair it, so we just keep throwing rocks in it to fill it back up, to prevent people from falling into it, um, because it becomes so deep that it actually literally, if you're walking your dog there, you could fall into it. Um, and then with that, with the erosion in these creek beds and everything, we're getting a lot of exposure of our tree roots and things of that nature. You did touch on the trees falling in the woods, which is generally also an effect of this increased amount of water coming down, washing out the root systems of these trees, causing them to weaken and fall. Which then leads to my next point, with, you know, in these bad storms, if we have these trees going down, we have a very mixed population in our development. So these trees going down, blocking roads and this flooding prevents, you know, our emergency personnel from getting there in a timely fashion if there was a medical emergency in one of these homes.
Mr. Everett or Mr. Coppins, in regards to Mr. Gallagher's question about his culvert eroding, are we fixing it the right way when when it does erode? I mean, uh, are we filling it with stone like he's saying, is that, is that the proper fix? I'm not sure.
Who's coming to stand there, I think it was the public works that was coming in?
Yes, the township workers.
When, when was that?
I don't have the exact dates, it's been three times now, once in the year two thousand twenty-four and twice twenty-five.
Okay.
They modified it first and now they're just placing ballast on top of it.
Yeah, I think I recall.
Pretty quickly.
Yeah, I mean, we can put more ballast in there, but I'll take a look at it with my head form and see if we can rectify, make it better.
Are you familiar with exactly where he is?
Yes.
Okay.
I think me and Mike actually met with your wife.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, over the summer, so we, we, I know where it's at. It it seems like runoff's coming from the road and going down between the road and culvert and it's washing out there. We could definitely take a look at it to see.
Yeah, it was in the one picture where you saw the video where the water was coming down Brookside and going into the stream bed. That's actually where it's washing everything away.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming. We. Hello, hello?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jim Murphy, um, I'm at four thirteen Fox Hollow Drive in Longhorn. Um, I happen to sit on the environmental advisory committee with Wesley and your other favorite commentator, uh, Jim Cates. Um, but just a couple of things, you know, someone mentioned the northeast extension. I mean, the expansion there, you can't go a half mile without seeing a retention detention basin. And, you know, converse that to the expansion on, you know, the east-west turnpike, you you don't even see a detention basin anywhere. So, you know, John, you know, the the turnpike has an MS four permit, just like the township does, right? Whether it's issued by the state, whether it's issued by EPA.
You're correct, and I I live in the Quaker town, so I I see that every day.
And it amazes me the difference between there, I mean, it's forty years difference, right? It is, you know, the old stormwater management was get it off your site and get it somewhere else. And, you know, obviously, that doesn't work today. But the, uh, you know, looking at the east-west expansion and, I mean, you do not see anything there. And I was wondering, I I think, you know, it it can't be allowed that the turnpike is just allowed to discharge their water without any management. So I think somewhere along the line, they have to be, I was glad to hear that you invited them to the meeting, obviously, they didn't come. But there's got to be some culpability on their behalf for managing what they have generated, especially with the expansion that is, you know, you showed the picture of the drainage area, four hundred acres. I mean, you know, it, I I I don't know how much is coming from the cemetery, I mean, there's, there is some impervious, but there's a lot of grass, it doesn't seem like it would generate a a significant amount of runoff. I think it's coming from upstream and I think the turnpike is one of the biggest culprits, I mean.
And and you are correct, they they have an MS four permit.
Right, so, I mean, and and someone mentioned before about like the storms. I know a few years ago, uh, in New Jersey, and I think the EPA was looking to update the storm events. So like, when you design a basin, you calculate the two-ten, uh, a hundred year storm, you know, and a few years ago, the the two-year storm was like two-point-three-five whatever, and they were looking to increase that to possibly three or or three and a half due to climate change. So, you know, those numbers come in when you calculate the size of a basin, you know? The more, more volume you have, the bigger your basin has to be, and they were going to increase those numbers. I don't know if they ever did, if those things went through.
So what's, what the the criteria is now is that you need to use the closest, um, Noah rain gauge?
Yep.
And that, that's like a running total, right? So those numbers fluctuate, um, so, uh, from the one to a hundred year storm, if the more storms you get, you know, the the higher those numbers are going to be, but that's still a moving total. And it's, and it takes a lot for that number to run, but it's, there's still a significant amount of rain, like for a hundred year storm, you know, you could be at three-point inches.
I did a quick calculation, you said the turnpike is a mile and a hundred feet. You know, a one-year storm generates almost three hundred and thirty thousand gallons.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, you figure if they had to design basins for, you know, a two-ten-hundred year storm, you know, multiply that by, you know, five, six, eight, you know, you're looking at, you know, uh, two-point-four million gallons of of volume that has to go somewhere.
Yep.
And there's nothing.
Yep.
So I think the turnpike is a culprit and I think, you know, addressing that would certainly help the people in the in the township.
I just want to add something to your comments on that. A friend of mine owns a piece of property, it's the old Pecarron Farm on, off of Princeton Avenue and County Lime Road. And he has a natural creek that runs through his property. And about five years ago or six years ago, the turnpike decided to do, do an expansion and there was already a a dump on the, on the his property, well, they they increased that dump, right? And it's washing out, not where his house is, but the rest of his property in a major storm. If you thought your storm pictures were bad, I could show you some that are really horrendous. Five years, no, four years now, and he's still fighting with the Turnpike Commission, you know, and and they haven't moved, so. So, um, of course, he's not a municipality, he's an independent person trying to do it. Hopefully, we'll have better luck, but as I think Mr. Cates said, it's it's going to be a multi-pronged solution. But I do believe that the turnpike is just, especially after the expansion of the turnpike, is definitely, you know, adding to it.
Yes, and, um, my last comment deals with the basins. You know, a basin is like a car, if you don't take care of it, it doesn't work. So, you know, I know it's in the township permit, um, you know, you you, it's in the turnpike permit, maintenance is required. If they're privately owned, uh, you know, it's up to the private person, if they're township owned, the township has to maintain them. But, you know, that's an important thing, they're supposed to be reviewed after every one-inch storm or or, you know, go and see what it looks like after a one-inch storm. You know, in my experience, uh, maintenance is where everything falls apart. And, you know, they build these great-looking basins, they last a little bit, a year or two, you get infiltrate, you get siltation in there. You know, if they're infiltration basins, they just clog up, they don't do anything. But, you know, and the emphasis on maintenance has to be placed, whether it's privately owned, publicly owned, uh, detention basin. So, and, you know, the same thing would be for the turnpike, when they eventually come, come and help you guys out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I know, uh, Mr. Italia and I, we were speaking yesterday and, you know, my memory isn't as good as Mr. Italia's, but he was talking about a gentleman who used to come here a few years back, who lived somewhere along the turnpike. And he was, you know, he would say at these meetings that, you know, ever since the turnpike expanded, you know, how much worse everything has gotten, I wish the, uh, I wish the gentleman was still coming today. But, uh, you know, I don't see how, from what Mr. Castle and I seen yesterday, I mean, yeah, absolutely, I think the turnpike, a lot of fingers can be pointed at him. Uh, we have had our state senator and our, uh, state rep offer if they need, you know, if we need any help to get a hold of the turnpike, you know, you know, we're the township, but, you know, we need all the help we can get too. You know, unfortunately, uh, you know, the turnpike couldn't make it tonight, but I hope that, you know, for our next meeting, we can get some representatives from the turnpike here, we will keep on them. Mr. Everett's will invite him, you know, we can have Mr. Galdo, have the township secretary invite him. We're going to bombard him with, you know, emails to get him here and hopefully, you know, they can offer some assistance. Anybody else from the public like to come back up?
My name's Courtney, I live in, uh, Bontree Farms with the rest of these fine folks. And, um, I'm kind of on the opposite end, so I'm just going to read out this, I'm better with that. So there's clearly inappropriate drainage on the opposite side too, but I don't feel like, it probably has something to do with the turnpike, but I can't say for sure. What I see is, I live at the, I live right behind Colonial Nissan on the corner of Windswept and Bridle Path. And anytime, and this isn't just when we have the big storms, this has been going on since I bought in twenty fifteen. The water comes off the hill and then goes right into my yard, so it comes flowing off of, I guess that's hilltop where it meets, um, Windswept or Bridle Path. It comes, I'm assuming this comes from up where Megan lives and then this eventually makes it way, it's way to me. Anybody who has water leaving their yards onto the street ends up in my yard and in my basement. So it hasn't been coming in, like, fully flooding my basement because I kind of know to expect it and I go out there and I will, I sit at the door with towels and just soak them up when we get a big rain, I have to get out in the middle of the night and do it. I've had two French drains put in my yard to kind of help with it and initially it helped. But these storms are getting bigger as far as I can tell too, so. I feel like a simple fix for my my situation and my neighbors, because it goes, she gets it much, much worse than I do, with just, I think it's called a swell, the little valley thing that goes, if that would put on the edge all the way going down Bridle Path and then at the end of that, there should be a catch basin that goes. I I had somebody from the township out and they came and looked and said it hasn't been updated in fifty years. And where the, the one catch basin is, it doesn't even see the water, it's kind of on, it's catty corner of where it comes off of Bridle Path. And it, there's nothing else I can do about it, I have sandbags set up in multiple layers in my yard just to make sure that that it doesn't come in my basement and I have, I've added so much soil, I've got, if you've ever driven down the end of Bridle Path, you see I have like plastic bags out there with dirt covering them that have, they're filled with, um, gravel. And that's the only thing keeping it from coming into my gate right now, it's kind of redirecting it back into the street. But when the big rains, it just went right over top of it and came in my basement, so. But I am about eight thousand dollars in on French drains and there's not much more that I can do, really, I don't know what else to do. Um, I forget the guy's name, Ray, I think was his name, came out and he said, yeah, you one hundred percent should have, um, a swell coming off there and a, and a basin put in so it would catch it and it would just connect it. And that would solve a lot of the problems for me and my neighbors that are getting flooded. I don't know if it would help up on your end, but anybody that's coming down off the hill, people that are catching that water, that's, the swell would absolutely help, it would save me a lot of money and effort.
Courtney, what's your last name and your address?
Elder, and I live at one zero two Windswept Drive. It's right, it's directly.
Send me the video.
Yeah, I just sent it to you.
Send me a video.
Yes, this is, that was from twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And that's a very mild rain.
I can't show it though, because it's on.
Yeah, but you feel free to pass the phone to whoever cares, it's just like, it's, every single big storm we have is like that. But when we had the past two storms, I couldn't even be out there recording it, because I was out there just trying to do anything I could to keep water out of my basement. And it was, I couldn't keep up with it, my kids were out there, I was trying to siphon hoses to get it to go out into the street.
I'm trying to visualize where your property comes in at, are you behind the parking lot that they have?
No, I'm behind like the show, the showroom.
The showroom?
Yeah, I'm.
So they're up above you and then it's running off the back of.
Yeah, so if you go behind the showroom, like, you're basically looking up the hill of Bridle Path, I don't even know where I'm at here. Oh, yeah, so if if you're looking up this way, all this water comes down and goes into my basement right there. And I don't know what else to do, so all that you would have to do is put a swell that goes along probably the inside of it, and I know my neighbors would love you for it too, and then actually put something for the water to go into, so. Yeah, this is my house right here, so. Yeah, so it 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 comes, yeah, it comes all the way down here and directly in straight into my house. A hundred percent of the time, it rains for longer than a half hour, at the very minimum, I have water sitting there.
I misunderstood what you're saying, so it's not running off the back of Colonial's property?
No, it's coming.
It's coming down from up top.
I don't know what, I haven't heard about turnpike thing until today, so. Um, I, because I can't go, somebody just mentioned, when it's raining, I don't, I can't go out and see what else is going on. As far as I knew, it was just going to be me here tonight. And I, you know, so when that go, when that goes, comes down the hill, I don't, uh, I'm just swimming every time. I am the basin one hundred percent, yes, yeah.
You are the basin.
So, and I, maybe it is coming from the turnpike, but, I mean, gravity is also playing a role and I don't need you to spend a billion dollars to fix that. That might be a couple thousand, if you could figure that out, it'd be great, it would just come down and it would save a lot of us, not all of us, but. Anything to fit, anywhere that we can fix like little stuff like that, it'd be great, so.
Mr. Everett, Mr. Coppins, can you guys go out and look at that area too? If Mr. Heinz had said, you know, there might be something we can do, maybe you guys can look into it and report back to the board?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hello, how are you?
Hi. Tracy Bridge, twenty-four Heather Road. So I live near you. I live near him, but I'm down further from his house. So the amount of rain that comes down to, I'm the lowest point, my front yard becomes a swimming pool, my side of my house, a swimming pool, my shed gets ruined, my plants get ruined, the mulch, the basement, it it's ridiculous. And then behind me is the Somerton Swim Club, that becomes a swimming pool, the the picnic benches are underwater, you wouldn't believe it. And I got a bigger storm drain, which costs a lot of money, and sometimes it still isn't good enough. All of us have to go downstairs and start bailing out the water. There's one drain, I don't know if you can add more or what this, what you can do, but there's only one drain in between my house and my neighbor's house that I see the water going, and it's pouring down, down the road to to the lowest point. So if he's getting a lot of water, can you imagine like what we're getting, because it's coming down also from us, to us? So, since he mentioned it, I wanted to reiterate. I I don't know, I don't know if we can get anymore, because you shouldn't, you can't even see my lawn and my neighbors, all of us. There's like four houses down at the the lowest point.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else out there tonight?
I've worked two hurricanes and there was no water.
Lawrence Foster, one thirty-two Brookside, Fine Tree Farms. Back before Stomar got shut down and all that, we had the township meeting via Zoom, five residents were allowed, I was one of them. We were told these retention basins should help, clearly they haven't. It has gotten, you asked a question, have we seen it getting worse? Yes, in the past two years, maybe the storms are getting bigger, but the flooding is getting a lot worse. I've been there twenty-eight years, hundred-year storms, I don't want to tell you how many times I've seen a hundred-year storm in twenty-eight years. So we need help, whatever you can do for us, but, um, it is getting worse since the cemetery. We had the turnpike out years ago, nothing ever really got resolved. They did the retention basins or the culverts, ours is the only one that didn't get fixed. We're the start of this, the problem, if the water can't get through, it floods the street, and that's where Leslie and the rest of the neighbors. it floods the street, and that's where Leslie and the rest of the neighbors.
You're saying the Turnpike did the covert improvements?
No.
No?
The Turnpike was involved in one of our meetings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't think they've actually ever helped.
No, no.
We also had Army Corps of Engineers at one point. I don't know if you can reach out to them to see if they can help do some research.
Well, you said that was Zoom, so that was probably during COVID?
During COVID.
So, that was before they expanded the Turnpike?
No, Turnpike was before that.
Yeah, that was 15 years ago. Yeah, at least 15 years ago.
22, 23 is when.
I'm talking about like the recent updates though.
Yeah, the basins, I don't think they've really helped us too much.
Yeah, but it still runs water down.
But, yeah, it's been bad for years. So, whatever yous.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, thank you. Anybody else out there? Folks, please come up if you have anything to say. Don't be afraid, you know, we're here. We want to hear your complaints, we want to try to help you guys. You know, we will set up another meeting, all right?
Can you just tell us what's next? Because I'm going to walk out of here and not really know what's going to happen next, and so, do we need to do other stuff, or are you guys going to do it?
I think Mr. Perrotto had said, if you see anything documented, please, we will notify you guys again. I know our professionals are going to look into some of these complaints tonight that they heard. Some of them they've already, they already know about. I'm sure there's some new things too. We're going to continue to try to get a hold of the Turnpike. We will set up another meeting date. You know, I apologize about this meeting date being tonight. We didn't, you know, you guys have been in front of us a couple of times. We didn't want you to think we were blowing you off. We didn't want to make it any longer. You know, we have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas, you know, we wanted to get you guys here tonight, so it might have been a little quick for some of yous, and I apologize about that. I didn't want you guys to think we were blowing you off. But we will set up another date, don't know when, let our professionals look into it. Hopefully, we can get the Turnpike to come onboard. We'll notify you guys again, same way we did tonight. If there is any of yous that had heard just through word of mouth, and you can think of a better way for us to notify you, please let us know. I believe you guys have a Pine Tree Farm Facebook page?
We do have the Pine Tree Farms Facebook page as well, but is there any way we could maybe get like an email list set up for specifically this issue, for like a flooding issue in this area? Like, for you guys to send out a large span email, just to say this is the date, this is what we're going to be talking about, it's like specifically about this discussion?
If you get us a list.
Of all the emails?
All the emails.
So, if I send that over to you, you'll be able to contact us all?
And then we'll set it up so that when we have another meeting scheduled, you'll get the email. We'll always post it on the website and everything.
But just for, you know, some other people, I know, we have some older people in here that maybe don't have social media or don't use their phones. If they're aware that there's an email coming their way eventually, they might be more inclined to check it.
It's easy enough for us to do.
Okay, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Not a problem. Yeah, I just want, sure.
Is there a department, like, when we compare to other townships, I don't know this stuff. Is there, do other townships have stuff and funds specifically designated for these kinds of things? Or there's, there's funds, but they're not funds in the sense that we're going to be able to fix a problem that's accumulated for the last 60, 70 years. I mean, we're a $13 million a year township, okay? $8 million of that goes to the police department. The rest pays for everything else. So, so, like Ken was saying, you know, we're not trying to, you know, blow smoke here, you know. This is going to be a process. It ain't going to get fixed tomorrow, you know, but we're taking a serious look at it, we're engaging with our professionals, we're going to engage with the state where we can, we're going to use the leverage of our legislatures. Township's not going to be able to do it on its own, I'll tell you right now. We can't fix the whole problem on our own. We're going to need help from the state, whether it be the DEP or whatever the other organizations manage. It's, it's going to be a while, but we can start doing mitigating things like maintain our basins, keep checking the culverts, to try and make sure what we do get, we can control it as best as we can. But this is going to be a process, so I just want everybody to understand that. It's not something, we can't fix, like I said, you know, 50, 60, 70 years of, of water mismanagement, you know, tomorrow. It's going to take us some time, but as a group, you guys have done an excellent job. I mean, that present, like I'll say again, that presentation was excellent, you know. I mean, so that should be very helpful as we, as we move through. So.
Please, please come to the microphone.
So, in the meantime, if it's going to take a few years, even if we replant trees, it's going to take, you know, a long time.
First, we got to do is we let our in-house professionals put some roadmap together for us to guide us of how we can navigate this process. I'm going to tell you right now, I don't think there's anybody up on this board knows how to navigate the process. So, you know, we're going to rely on John and Mike and Joe and Rich to, you know, help us, you know, formulate a path forward, okay? Once we do that, then we're going to start knocking things down the list. But some of the things you spoke about, some of the things they spoke about, you know, there are some things we can do on our end to help mitigate it. Is it going to fix it? No. But, you know, at least we can, you know, make sure that we're doing the maintenance that we need to do to, you know, prevent those issues related to that. I don't know if there's any solution that's going to fix three inches of rain in an hour, okay? I mean, that's just, you know, I don't know if any solution's going to fix that, but, you know, we could definitely do, try to do better than what we're doing right now.
Well, we appreciate you having the meeting and looking into it.
Well, you can thank Jen for calling me up.
And Leslie, and Leslie for, and.
And Leslie, she was great too.
In the meantime, you know, I guess we'll just keep on with sandbags and, you know, sub pumps.
Yeah, like I said, I don't have an answer for you to fix it tomorrow.
Our basements are just going to keep flooding out, you know. It's just, it's going to be years, it sounds like, until this is really fixed, or if it ever does get fixed.
It might not be. And I'm going to be honest with you, because this frustrates me. I live here too. I have problems in my neighborhood as well. Everything with government works at a snail's pace. It's very annoying. You're going to get very frustrated, but just know it's something that we are taking very seriously, and I encourage all of our professionals, like, this is a priority. I worked two hurricanes in your neighborhood. I don't know if you remember, I was out there all night in your neighborhood, getting people out of their houses. Water wasn't the problem, it was the wind, and all your wires came down like spaghetti, and no one could get in and out. And I don't remember the water being this bad. And it, you know, you have to go back and do the history and kind of work it backwards, I think, to figure out what has changed between, because Hurricane Katrina, you guys did not get water. Did you flood in Hurricane Katrina? Did you flood in Hurricane Irene?
Or Sandy.
Or Sandy. And it, it was, it was the wires that did you guys in.
Yeah.
And what has changed between those three hurricanes and today? And, you know, it comes back to removal of trees, like Mr. Kate said, and I love that Mr. Kate came up, and you actually came up, you have three solutions. I love it when people come up and they're like, this is what's wrong, but here's some solutions. And I think we need to listen and take those solutions, if we can make them happen, and start looking into getting the ball rolling. But you're going to get frustrated, and here's what I'm going to tell you, because I've been on your end. I've been the person that comes to the meetings and complains about the school district and complains about the township. You have to stay unified, and you have to stay on top of it. This guy will never lie to you. And the reason why he wanted this meeting and that Steve wanted the meeting was because we didn't want you to feel like we were just blowing you off, that you were coming, that we were getting email, we were getting phone calls, we were getting, thanks for the Facebook, Court, and, but, that we weren't giving you answers. Everything works at a snail's pace in government, but we're going to try our hardest, and we're going to use the people that we know that are in positions that can get us to the people and hold them accountable, because this, to me, comes back to the cemetery and the Turnpike. And we need to get them here.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes.
I want to just say thank you guys for all hearing us out, especially with this lengthy presentation I had. But I do also want to state, as Supervisor Bowman says, that government works at a snail's pace, so does our environment. So, as much as we keep coming back to the Turnpike being a problem, which I do think it is, I think with Stone More, Sunset Memorial, cutting down a large amount of our trees that drank a lot of our water, definitely increased our flooding. I know we've had some other neighbors in our neighborhood clearcut a lot of the backyard recently. Our environment has bounced back, and I just ask that everyone in Pine Tree Farms does their best to plant trees, do their best, keep their yards clean, have our creeks, have our boundaries and our erosion, do some stream bank work within your yard, within the woods. If you're in the woods, try to clean up some things. If you see a culvert really blocked, let the township know. It's really going to be a group effort, and especially when it comes to the environment, we really need to work together, and it's going to be slow, and it's going to take a long time. But if any of us expect to stay in Pine Tree Farms for another 75 years, we have to start now. So. I just want to say again, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Leslie, your daughter's something. I'm sure you're very proud of her. You did a terrific job for a young lady, terrific job.
I tried to do the PowerPoint and she took over.
She said, "Ma, let's get out of the way."
Also, I will say, I'm going to put a little paper and a pen up. If you guys want to write your email, I can consolidate a list for us to all put on, so that way when they do officially have a date, just do a full email blast. And you can put a star next to your name if you want me to send you a copy of the Google Slides PowerPoint.
All right. And you're going to send that, you're going to send that to us too?
Yes, I know Mike and Tonya has.
Or do we have it on thumb drive or anything already? Okay, great. All right, thank you, thank you.
If nobody else out there has any other comments, oh, there we go, we have one more.
I'm trying, but I was in the bathroom, good.
Well, nobody.
Hi, I'm Jen Ferrendino. I'm 126 Brookside. I live next door to the Fosters, two doors down from the Stiteson, three doors down from Leslie. I can say that the flooding, I've been there 13 years, the flooding's gotten worse. Usually, the water would cut off at the end of my driveway. Notice how I say water, Philadelphia. The water would cut off at the end of my driveway. Now, it comes up at least eight feet almost closer to my house. It comes down the sides of the yard, and it rushes back into the creek. Something has to be done. We've had the older gentleman, whose car broke down in front of the Fosters, he wanted to stay in the car until his wife got there. That doesn't work. We can't, as civilians, go in there and rescue them. I had another car a few years back, the car blew up in the front, the engine blew, the fire department has to come. It's a waste of resources for the fire department and the police to come as well. I kiddingly said to Mike, we should put one of those barriers just permanently at, between mine and the Fosters' house, so when it does rain like that, we can just put it out as citizens so nobody does drive through it. He said that can't happen, but I still, if you want to put it in my yard, put it in my yard, and I'll put it out when it rains. Just trying to be preventative.
It's, it's getting it there, like, it's, it goes out way past your house. So, anywhere, like, if you ever try to go swim down Byberry when it's flooding, right? You know, those automatic gates that come down, you see how far out they are now? Like, there's, there's all grant money that goes into that, and that's all part of the management of the flood plane.
But the, the worst height of the flooding does start right at the beginning of my yard, where this last flood on the 31st, it was up to my thighs. I'm not very tall, and that's very deep. I do also want to say, I don't have any solutions, because I'm not environmentally intelligent, but I will say, back to what you were saying, Mr. Perrotto, maybe some of this could have been avoided as far as finances were concerned. If we actually held Stone More accountable for what they should have done financially, we would have that money to draw back on, instead of giving them a discount. When I look up the definition of a variance, it's to guarantee something or to make something happen, because there is a hardship. Stone More is a million-dollar company. What hardship did they prove that they needed these variances to occur? The last thing I'm going to say is, back on Pine Tree Farms, one of the neighbors posted, from June of 1954, the township was supposed to be talking then to the Turnpike about the flooding. So, there's documentation back to June of 1954 that the flooding was a concern from the Turnpike. Obviously, it's gotten worse. That's all I've got.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, anybody else out there tonight? All right, all right. You can be the last one, sir, then I'm going to have my supervisors chime in if they have anything to say.
All right, I'm Matt Coyle at 10 Hilltop. So, not all the flooding happens at where they guys live, it comes down, and I'm right across from Summer and Springs there. The two creeks come down from county line, and them meets in my backyard. And two houses next to me, two houses both sides, everyone gets flooded, you can't drive down the street. You guys dig out the culvert, but you don't take any of the debris or trash that comes and gets stuck at the barrier that you take off. But I told my wife to yell at yous, but she didn't go out, I was at work. And then it goes down to Summer and Springs, where there's one grate, probably two foot by two foot with rebar, and then does a hard 90, goes down maybe 100 yards, hard 90's left, and goes through the swim club. I don't know if there's a way around that, or if the swim club could do something, but also, up by Bustleton Ave, they're doing some kind of construction now. I think they're cutting trees, they got some bulldozers back there. I don't know what they're doing.
Wait, what's that?
That's, I'm not really sure. Yeah, they own the property, and.
Yeah, they took all the trees down.
Yep.
Mr. Italia, we'll look into that.
Yeah, it's, it's a, a lot of equipment. It's noisy too. Yeah, it's where the American Heritage Credit Union Mortgage Places, it's right next to there. Yeah, they're doing a lot of work back there. I don't know if that's going to make it worse. The other thing is, I came home from work on the July 8th flood, and that county line in Pine, that was all flooded. They had rescue swimmers pulling someone out their car. The neighborhood behind that, I couldn't even get home. I had to go back down Byberry to Philmont and come back around. So, it's coming down there and not making it good, and where that new development is, next to the cemetery, the water's obviously coming right through there and flooding all that too. So, I don't know if that happened before. I only got here two years ago, so.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll, we'll have Mr. Everett too look into what you were saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, for the supervisors, anybody like to chime in? Any comments?
Yeah, I have some concerns regarding the swift water, and I don't know if you can do any warnings or post anything regarding that, having the kids riding through the creek when it's the highest. This is how kids drown.
I stopped them. I told them, it was two young 14-year-old boys, and I was like, "Guys, you're not making it out if you go in."
They're invincible.
It's very concerning, and, and listen, if somebody gets stuck in their car, and I know it's tempting, don't go get them. You guys are not trained. Call 911, sixes will come out with their swift water rescue and do their thing. Their response time is usually under four minutes. So, just please, I, I have a lot of concerns now about swift water, and now I'm going to have nightmares tomorrow and Thursday about all your houses and your sweet little children out by this creek. So, yeah, if you see the red Jeep driving around, that's me checking on you guys. So, just please, you know, caution, I caution you. You're, you're going to, no one here is trained, and just please be careful. And I don't know what to tell you, my heart breaks for you guys. I know some of you, I've talked to some of you. I can't even imagine water in my basement. I would probably move. I, it's just my worst nightmare. And. I'm just saying how I, I would feel. I would feel. I empathize with you, I'm not telling you to move. I'm telling you, I would be that upset. I don't know if I would be able to exist, and you are existing with it, and I commend you for that, because it's awful. We're going to stay on top of this, and hopefully, we can get some meetings soon, and reach out if you want to vent. I, I'm, I'm kind of upset, like, I'm, I feel bad for you guys. I, I wish we could do something tomorrow, and please be, be careful the next couple of days, because the rain's coming, okay?
Great. Mr. Castle, Mr. Perrotto, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other, I'll be out there Friday taking pictures. I could not get on to the Turnpike property from Pine Tree Side, but I'm going to be coming down the Turnpike, and I'm going to pull over and get out. I want to inspect that culvert, see how much water's coming through it. We were able to get on the other side, and we could not get behind the homes there. We're not as sharp as our engineer. But we took a lot of pictures the other day, so, you know, keep taking photographs and submit them, and that'll help us. It will, thank you.
I just want to say, you know, this is what a township's all about, tight-knit community, small community. In fact, you guys all banded together and decided, you know, that we need to. In fact, you guys all banded together and decided, you know, that we need to, you know, get something resolved, you know, not only makes an impact for yourselves, but makes an impact on, on us as well. We are going to do our absolute best to do this, but I'm telling you, please be patient. As Cindy said, government moves at a snail pace. That doesn't mean this board moves at a snail pace, but the other entities in the state that we're going to rely on to help us mitigate this problem do. And, you know, we're going to work with Hogan's office, we're going to work with Farrey's office, Kim's already, you know, talked to them about the fact that, you know, we're having this meeting and, and we're going to need their help and they've offered, you know, to do whatever they can. And, but first step is we're going to let our professionals give us an evaluation of, and a roadmap of how they think we should move forward and then once we can do that, you know, then we'll start, you know, developing more of a plan and have another meeting and hopefully at that time we can have the people that we need to help us here as well and, you know, start actually getting to the point where we can fund whatever the, whatever the, you know, remedy is going to be that we can do. But in the meantime, like I said, we can do our end, we can make sure we're maintaining the area properly and to keep the areas free to flow the water, even though I, that one flow was pretty, pretty nasty.
It's flowing.
You know, so, all right, thank you so much.
Showed him the video.
All right, folks, so at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion, motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you very much, everyone.